Did that do?
Everyone, we will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external debibulator on the back row of the chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have two resolutions, Resolutions D and E. Is there a motion to approve? Is the second okay with that? There is a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, to approve D and E and adjourn. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Consent agenda, items A through O. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. A new chapter on the Open Meetings Act today. I know I should probably go to my own representative first, but I requested this board and the county attorney and the Nebraska Attorney General that this body have a full and open two-way discussion with the citizens so we can exchange questions and answers, particularly in regards to the Open Meetings Act and what the words mean, because the words are not defined. Reasonableness is not defined unless it's reasonable in your mind, but it's intent of the act is also reasonable in the citizen's mind. So we have a little bit of debate to go there, and debate is actually a two-way conversation. So possibly, the fact that you do not have a two-way conversation, unless you invite it and announce it, that might be a violation of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. So let's put it on the agenda and let the citizens come down, and don't put a time limit on it. I do believe that one of the organizations in this country that advises boards of commissioners and city councils and civic leaders across the board has cautioned all of them, and they're one of their best practices, that you shall not put a limit on the time. Well, one of the biggest violators of that is the Omaha Public School Board. And I talked to them about that last night. That in itself is a violation of the Open Meetings Act, even according to your best practices. So I think it would be to your best interest also to let the public have a discussion. Two-way, in front of the public, no time limit. For example, this board of the school board would say, "Ah, there's only three last night, but we're still going to limit it to a total of one hour." "But you can only have five minutes." "Oh, I'm going to change that, you can have two minutes." "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut the microphone off." Those are violations of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. Their agenda also is extremely poor. Yours is very good. It does give us reasonable knowledge of what's going to be discussed. Their says nothing. It's a one-sentence thing. That is a violation of the Open Meeting Act. The public has a right to hear. The public has a right to know what's going to be discussed. A one-sentence thing in legal terms is not a reasonable practice or a reasonable rule. You're a lot better on that. The city council is not. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our presentation, our COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update, presented by Dr. Lindsey Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Well, today we are continuing to sit in the high transmission category for COVID-19. And our risk indicators continue to show that we are essentially plateaued at this point. So we continue to have high rates of cases of COVID-19. We've had some ups and downs in those numbers over the past few weeks, but essentially, we're kind of sitting kind of on a plateau if you kind of look at that over time. So our seven-day total number of cases per hundred thousand right now is sitting at 229.8. So that's, again, a little up and down depending on the day that you're looking at this. Which way that's going to go, whether we're going to continue to see an increase or whether we're going to see a decrease, remains to be seen. So we're, of course, cautiously optimistic on that. Oh, so sorry. Great. Hopefully, those on Zoom are able to see this now. So, again, we're cautiously optimistic here. Hopefully, we'll see our rates come down, but it remains to be seen really what that's going to really look like. This is what our cases per age group look like. So we're sitting pretty steady in terms of our pediatric and adolescent age groups. We did see some growth in cases in our 20 to 29 and 30 to 39 age groups over the past week. However, our case rates within our 0 to 19 age group have remained fairly steady. And we saw that borne out with our, the number of cases or the rate of cases that we saw in our schools over the past week. So last week, I reported to you that we had 2.8 per thousand in our schools, and that remained true for this past week. So we're kind of remaining at a constant level there, at least for the past couple of weeks. So hopefully, we'll continue to either see a plateau or a decrease would be even better. The distribution across our community of cases. I'm going to go back just a little bit so that we have complete data to work with. I think this week, we're not, yeah, we're not complete yet. So this is what we're seeing through the 18th of September. You can see 68022 is having, continues to have high rates. I'll scroll back through also, but if you recall, that's been consistently an area where we've had a higher number of cases. And then over in 68104, and I think then one next to it is 681... Well, yeah, 111, if I remember correctly. So we continue to see a high number of cases in that area. Keep that in mind when we're looking at the vaccination maps here in just a moment. For hospitalizations, we're kind of hovering still up in the 80s. For our occupancy rate, you can see that we kind of had a slow increase over the past month or so in terms of our hospitalizations. We're sitting really anywhere between 81% and 89% with our occupancy rate. That's certainly something to keep our eye on and be concerned about because, obviously, if we do not have capacity, we can't take care of whatever comes in. Other area hospitals also have the same concern. What that means is that if somebody needs care, they're having to be transferred potentially quite far for their care. If somebody needs a high level of care, that can be life-threatening if they have to be moved to a bed that's far away. So that's something we definitely want to keep our eye on. As of yesterday, we were at 84% occupancy rate. Again, that's something that can change really from moment to moment, to day to day. So kind of overall, where we are sitting though has been very consistently in the upper 80s, mid to upper 80s with that. For our ICU usage, we're sitting at 89%. You kind of see this blue cluster over here. That's our ICU usage. So 89% usage of our ICU rate is definitely concerning. That means that it's very tight trying to get those high acuity beds for people who need them. Our pediatric ICU is currently at 60%. The good news is that we are currently seeing RSV rates starting to go down, so that at least provides a little bit of breathing room. But we are seeing an uptick over the past few weeks in the number of hospitalizations for COVID for pediatrics. So we've really gone from having one or two Peds cases, you know, from a couple of, a month or two ago, to now seeing between eight and 11 cases of kids that are hospitalized with COVID. So that's another area where we're keeping our eye very closely. There is a group of stakeholders that meet daily to really look at beds for pediatrics. And when we talk about beds, we're talking about staffed beds. We're not talking necessarily about the actual beds themselves because beds don't take care of patients, the staff do. So when we talk about all of this, we're talking about how many staffed beds we have. So right now, 60% capacity on those pediatric ICU beds. 198 total COVID inpatients right now, and seven of those, again, are pediatric. And then right now, we have, if you look down the yellow line, those are our ventilators. That has jumped in the past week. We were sitting in the low 30s, maybe high 20s for ventilator usage. We have jumped up to 36 for ventilator usage for COVID patients in the past week. So that, of course, means that we have a higher acuity of patient that's being seen there and needing that higher level of care. So that's another area where we continue to have concern and want to keep our eyes. I did also want to point out to you deaths. So it's not, it's not one that I have covered real extensively in many of my previous presentations to you because our number of deaths were fairly low. However, I wanted to point out to you that, and this only goes through 9/11, so we have a couple of, we have at least one week of data that we haven't added yet. But you'll see the week of 9/4, we had a spike of 10. That went down. We kind of, we're looking at that to see if that was kind of just an outlier. This past week, we had 15 deaths reported. Of those, 15, 11 were not vaccinated. The ones that were vaccinated, the four that were vaccinated, were all individuals who had underlying conditions and/or were in higher age groups, so over, well over 65. So that is something that we are definitely concerned about, just the number of deaths that are being reported. This week, I have not had quite that volume, but it's only Tuesday. So that can still, that can still be something that increases over the week. Hopefully not. But we are definitely seeing an increase in reported deaths coming in to us. And I, because that's not something that, you know, we were seeing a whole lot of over the past couple of months, I wanted to make sure to bring that to your attention, that we're seeing that. So breakthroughs, this is that statistic that I told you we're tracking. This one hasn't been updated for this week, but it is still sitting below, under 1% for the number of fully vaccinated or the percentage of fully vaccinated individuals who become a breakthrough case. So essentially, those who go on to still get a COVID infection and have a positive test, even though they've been fully vaccinated. So that rate remains low, and we'll continue to track that. We continue to be fairly flat on the number of doses of COVID vaccine that we're administering, although we're still out there pounding the pavement and trying to get it done. So here's a little bit better chart for you that you can see that. This is cumulative doses, but you can kind of see over time. You've got an increase, but it's a, it's a pretty, pretty flat increase. Not much of a, of an incline there. So residents with one dose. 72.5% of our over 12 population currently has one dose, and 60% of our total residents currently have one dose. So we're getting there slowly. And then our, for being fully vaccinated, 67.7% of our over 12, so that's the eligible population. And then 56% of our total residents are fully vaccinated. I would also point out to you that our, if you look at this by race and ethnicity, we definitely have a lag with our black population in terms of getting them in and getting them vaccinated. This is something that is very high on our priority list and something that we're looking at very closely. We are working with our trusted partners in North Omaha. We are having conversations with different stakeholders to determine how best we can help get those numbers up. Looking at our kiddos, 65,500 doses have been administered to our 12 to 17 population. 61.9% of that population has one dose, and 54.7% are fully vaccinated. So again, we continue to claw our way up very slowly on that. And we continue to go to schools to offer vaccine. We were at a number of clinics essentially that were held in OPS last week in the high schools. We're going to continue doing that. It's not an everyday thing, but we continue to be there at every opportunity that we're able to be there to offer that vaccine. And we're really at any school where we are allowed to come in and do that. All right, so I wanted to show you the map for the fully vaccinated so that we can also kind of think about this in terms of where our cases are happening. So you'll remember that the Elkhorn Corridor was one area where we were seeing a high number of cases, but then also kind of in this horizontal corridor, 68104, 68111. And you'll notice there that we do have lower vaccination rates there. So this is really an area where we're concentrating efforts to boost our vaccine rates. So there was some news that came out this week. The FDA debated boosters this past Friday and basically made a split recommendation. No boosters recommended for the general population at this time, but did recommend them for people who are at high risk. And basically, "at high risk" meant people who work in high-risk situations and people who have high-risk conditions. So that still has to be essentially recommended through CDC and ACIP. And so, once that happens and we're able to get standing orders to start administering under those recommendations, we will do so. That hasn't been done yet, so we're still, we're still holding on and waiting for that to come forth. And we will provide more information as it becomes available and more information about when and where those sorts of doses can be administered. We also are hearing that Pfizer is getting ready to submit their information for EUA for the 5 to 11 age group for vaccine, which is a big sigh of relief for many who have been waiting for this for a long, long time. That doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily have it very soon, so there's still a process that has to occur. FDA has to do a deep dive into all of that research data that Pfizer is providing to them. They need to make recommendations. The CDC and the ACIP need to make their own recommendations on that. And then, of course, there's the rollout component of that. Now, all of that being said, we're keeping a very close eye on it so that when it comes time to actually administer that vaccine, we can move very quickly and already have as many components of that rollout in place as possible so that we're able to just move and not start planning late in the game and have a delay. We all recognize how important it is to make these available as quickly as possible. So we're already talking about it. We're already planning both for booster doses and for pediatric doses. It's still, you know, a couple of months out for that at least, but we're, we're talking about it, we're planning for it so that we can make sure that we're prepared. And I think that's all I have, so I would be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Before we start, I just have one quick question. I haven't been able to see it, but I understand the state has restarted their dashboard. Is that correct?
That is my understanding as well, and I have not had an opportunity to pull it up either, but my understanding is that they will be, they will, they...
Populating it like they did before?
Yeah, with, so all of the counties across Nebraska, their data should be pulled into that dashboard.
Great. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. If I'm seeing these numbers and graphs correctly, we're kind of back to where we were a year ago. Is that right?
Very similar to where we were a year ago.
The national death rate is averaging around 2,000 deaths per day. And I don't know if we have, you know, a compare and contrast to where our death rate was a year ago. I don't expect you to have it off the top of your head, you weren't here. That might be something to see where we are in terms of this national trend. And, you know, maybe you could find that out and...
Sure.
Send it to us. That would be great. The, a couple of the maps on the dashboard that we're looking at and the one that you have on your PowerPoint are a little different. Are yours more recent than what appears on the, just the regular COVID dashboard that you pick up on your...
So the one I have up right now is the one that is currently populating the dashboard. This is pulled up directly from the internet, so it should be what's on there currently.
A couple of them, they're just a smi, it's like a color thing with the ZIP code thing.
Okay, which map are you, are you on the cases or on the vaccines?
I'm trying to bring it back up, but I don't have it right on my screen. It's not a big thing, but I'm just saying. What you've got, what we're seeing, is the most recent stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, and one thing I will say with the maps, so for anybody who's going to maps to look at cases, when you do this dropdown menu up at the top, you're going to see cases, tests, cumulative, and weekly. Those top three maps are going to be, basically, over the entire pandemic. This bottom one that says weekly is going to give you the cases that have just occurred over a week. And this one, you have to scroll back on to get the, to get whichever week you want. So, for instance, this, this one that I'm on is for the week of 9/11 through 9/18. Our current week isn't complete yet because it's only Tuesday. And so, as you scroll back through there, you will see, you know, depending on which week you're on, those colors will change because the cases would have changed for that week.
Okay. If I recall, the highest, you know, which is kind of that burnt orange color, I guess, there in the Western ZIP code, which is, what, 681 something 22, is also the highest ZIP code with vaccination rates. Is that right? Are the same?
So...
Farthest west one there, the dark one.
68022 is one of the areas that has high vaccination rates. You are correct about that.
Okay. The, at the end, I believe you were talking about, was that the booster vaccination schedule that you were talking about at the end of your remarks?
So the boosters aren't, the approval for the boosters is not complete yet. They, the, basically, there have been meetings to recommend it, but there are several steps that that recommendation, that those have to go through to actually get to the point where we, as clinicians, can actually administer them. We're not there yet. There's a couple more meetings that have to happen. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices kind of has the last word. So when, once they've made their recommendation and the CDC then publishes their, the official recommendation...
One minute.
Then we can, then we can go ahead and start giving those boosters.
So nobody's giving boosters right now?
They shouldn't be.
But do you have like a projection six weeks out, eight weeks out?
Oh, I think it would be faster than that. I mean, these meetings are happening now, and so I would think in the next couple of weeks, those booster doses. And again, they've only approved those for some high-risk populations, not for the general population at this point. But those should be available sometime in the next couple of weeks, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Just a couple of questions. One is just, or just a statement. We talked about the state dash, the state dashboard finally being up again. I believe that's only up because we've reached the 80% hospitalization rate, which is, to be honest, quite frustrating because the minute we go below 80, from what I understand, it's going to be taken down again. So, so I think that we really need to hop on the governor's office, especially those of us who work in hospitals, because this information is what we're using to try to, to get people taken care of. Those of us at the bedside need that information to... Those of us at the bedside need that information to do the best job and to really manage our resources. So any pressure we can put on the governor to say, "Keep this dashboard up", physicians have written to him to say, "We need this dashboard", and until it reached 80%, it fell on deaf ears. So that's just a point to make. Second is, you mentioned that the unvaccinated, or the vaccinated population who have died from this tend to have multiple comorbidities. Do you happen to have information on the, that cohort of unvaccinated individuals? Are they healthy, or do they also have multiple comorbidities?
It varies. So I can tell you, I get to see each of those death certificates, and I take each, each one of those very seriously, and it's impactful to read each of those. Some of those deaths are certainly individuals who are in their 50s, early 60s, and did not have any pre-existing conditions.
All right, just wanted to get that information out there. I think it's, again, an important point to make that if you're unvaccinated, if you're healthy, you have a better chance of dying from this than you do if you're, I mean, if people talk about, "Well, you're still vaccinated, you still could die from this", it's, yeah, but you may have multiple other issues going on that just exacerbated it. So, and that's all I have.
It's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hughes, thanks for the information again, very, very valuable. Appreciate it. Follow up real quickly. Dr. Boyle asked a pretty interesting question, and I, and I wanted to possibly piggyback on that. We hear, we hear, we've been hearing comorbidities for the last 18 months, 17 months, whatever. And we hear it quite a bit. Is there, is there a consistent categorization? People are showing up in hospitals and on ventilators. Is there a consistent categorization of nationwide of comorbidities? So what I mean is, is the Mayo Clinic, Johns Hopkins, Northwestern University, the CDC, and local government entities, local government subdivisions? Are we all classifying comorbidities the same way?
I would say yes, in that, well, comorbidities can encompass quite a few things. In general, the comorbidities that most impact, you know, somebody's likelihood of-
That tests positive with COVID.
Right, right, that are likely to impact that are generally things that impact a person's immune system, so, that are going to weaken that. And that encompasses a lot of different things. So, I mean, you're looking at uncontrolled diabetes, obesity, cancer. You know, there's all of the different transplants. There are a number of things that can be considered comorbidities. So in that regard, yes. However, again, it's just, it's extremely broad, what could fall into that category.
Okay. And again, but following up with what Commissioner Boyle asked, are there people who are tracking, so if somebody passes away, you know, from, and they have, actually had tested positive for COVID, I don't know if I can believe what I'm reading out there. I mean, I'm trying to, I consistently try to grab information, and I'm not sure what to believe. And it doesn't matter where I try to grab the information from. So what I'm curious about is, is somebody, she already asked a question, and I think you answered it appropriately, but if we dig down deeper, how are we in Douglas County categorizing it? So in other words, we have 770 deaths. Is there, are we simply tracking it by, by the demographics, age? So, that's it? I mean, do we have, what if somebody got the flu while they contract? What if somebody had the flu while they contracted COVID? That doesn't count, right? I mean, there, there are categories that we can depend on. That's what I'm saying.
Right, I know exactly what you're, what you're asking. I can't necessarily answer it specifically off the top of my head and tell you what, what, like, how we're separating out each of the groupings, you know, what we would call, like, how many people who died had X comorbidity? Like, how many of them had diabetes? How many of them had heart disease? How many of them had, you know, cancer? I don't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Oh, he says it's on the dashboard. See? It's good to have my PIO person here.
Well, and I don't mean for you to be redundant. You did answer it for Commissioner Boyle. What I'm trying to do is just tell you that, simply, I don't know who to believe. I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how many of, for example, how many of these 770 individuals wouldn't have, likely have passed away had they not had something else going on, right? I mean, so I'll, I digress. I'm sorry.
It's a good question, and I will say that that has been, that has been an issue that we have kind of dealt with nationally over the past 18 months, pretty consistently, that there have been differences in how data is collected and reported on that.
Okay, thanks, doctor.
Commissioner Boyle?
Explain another point. I think what helps is when you look at a death certificate, when you say cause of death. So, cause of death says, you know, COVID-19, and then you've got secondary diagnosis as, and then you know they have the other comorbidities, like, as a result of COPDs. You know, COPD is what they had, but then they got COVID, and that's what killed them. So I think there is some misinformation that we get paid more for saying it was COVID instead of COPD or something like that. I've seen information that we get paid more for, the doctors get paid more for using that as a diagnosis, and that's not true. But I think when I, when I read the death certificates, that's, that's what makes most sense to me. It's COVID-19 was the cause of death as a result of underlying lung cancer exacerbated by underlying cardiac disease. And so you've got a list of things. So, your example, Commissioner Friend, where we can't really define maybe necessarily flu versus COVID. An infection can be an infection, but you can, when someone has comorbidities, say, if they didn't have these underlying conditions, COVID might not have killed them. So they were huge contributing factors. So, so as I understand it, those comorbidities really are the things we need to hit on. And I'm surprised at the breadth of comorbidities. I mean, when Dr. Hughes mentioned, you know, obesity, well, shoot, then, you know, I'm in that category, you know? So it's really, I think, amazing that some things that we don't see as potential serious illness really are, are causing the numbers that we're seeing in COVID, not just COVID infection, but COVID death. So, just wanted to make that point.
And on the flip side of that, someone could have, just say, cancer, and they could be in, you know, stage four. And they could be moving along quite well with treatment and still having, you know, a pretty good quality of life, but it wasn't but for the COVID-19 coming along and taking over their body and causing, that's the cause, if you will, of their death, even though they had those other issues as well. So I agree with Commissioner Boyle that the comment about hospitals getting paid more money because of it is, you know, that's come and gone and fallen, been proven to be false. And, and again, we go strictly, as the health department, we go off of the death certificates. We ourselves don't tag it as that, the physicians tag it as cause of death, so-
Correct.
The, the one question I had about the deaths, though, is we had a very high number of deaths here this past week, but they, they could be cases from, you know, two months ago, correct?
Correct.
So it's not just all that happened right now. It could have happened two months ago, and then they just never got better and then passed away.
Correct. So there are those who, you know, could have been hospitalized with, with COVID for a number of weeks or a month or two, and their death did not occur until more recently. And then, of course, there's, there's a period of time for that death certificate to be processed and come to us. So it's, it's not that everybody caught COVID and died last week. That were, some possibly did, but we're talking some of them. It could have been a very long, drawn-out process.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation again and the update. We certainly appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you.
And you have a good rest of your day.
You too.
With that, we'll move to committees. The budget report under Finance as presented. Under Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. And then, just to remind everybody, we do have a Human Resources Committee meeting following the Board of Commissioners. With that, do we have a motion to go into executive session for labor negotiations? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
We do have one contract negotiations due. Mike Myers wanted to talk-
I'm sorry.
Mike Myers is here, also an executive session for a contract negotiation issue. So, the labor negotiations and contracts.
And contracts, okay. Please make note of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion passes six to zero.[268.14]